Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council on October 28th. Before we get started this evening, our police chief, Police Chief Dennis Evers has a presentation to make.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
It was one week ago today, the mayor swore in our newest officer, David Ashworth, and I wanted to give David an opportunity to come in, meet all of you, introduce him this evening, since this is our first council meeting since the swearing-in. A little bit of information about David. He's a 2008 graduate of Noble High School in Berwick, Maine, and joined the United States Air Force right after graduation. He holds two associate's degrees from the Community College of the Air Force, one in aviation maintenance technology and the other in criminal justice. David graduated from the Sinclair Criminal Justice Training Academy on July 26th of this year and attained his Peace Officer Certification on August 21st. He's actually out of the same graduating class as Dean English, who we swore in just prior to David. He served as a crew chief and crash recovery team leader with the United States Air Force from 2008 till his honorable discharge in 2014. He, at that point, transitioned to the Air National Guard. He also worked as a corrections, in corrections, at the Hamilton County Juvenile Court in Cincinnati and a security officer at the University of Cincinnati Hospital. He's also, at the time, he was attending the academy. He was on full-time deployment with the 178th Security Forces Squadron at the Springfield Air National Guard Base, and he served as a physical security police services, NCOIC, from May 2016 until joining us here at the city of Beaver Creek. He and his wife Amanda and their children, Elena and Haley, live in Beaver Creek Township, and we welcome them to the police department family. And I'll give David an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. Me and my family are very excited to kind of start over again. I've been here about a year, so we're excited to move forward, and thank you again.
Well, you were brief at your swearing-in, you're brief now too. We sometimes appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody have any comments?
Just thank you for your service and welcome.
Appreciate you welcoming.
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Litteral?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Van for a moment, please.
If y'all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could all just bow our heads for a moment. Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening, and before I ask for a vote on that, it was brought to my attention at the Planning Commission, the Items Four and Items, excuse me, Items Six and Items Seven were combined in the presentations. It's an amendment to the PUD plus the site plan, and I just want to nod of the head that that's okay, so that the clerk can read them both at the same time when we get there. Is that workout okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so you have an agenda before y'all. Any changes?
Seeing none, I'd like to move.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of amendments, minutes from the October 14th, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One extension.
Sorry, I forgot to ask. Next is the October 21st, 2019 work session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the October 21st work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? None. All right, now we're going to move on to the public hearing, and we would ask that the clerk read both the public hearing for the amended PUD or amendment and the site plan.
The first one is the amendment. This is an application filed by Yolo Development, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval for an amendment to add an additional 2.9354 acres of land to PUD 17-4. The properties are located on Rock Drive, west of North Fairfield Road, further described as Book Five, Page Five, Parcels 136, 140, 141, and 142 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas. The second public hearing is an application filed by Yolo Development, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval for a specific site plan to allow for the development of a medical office building on 9.3 acres. The properties are located on Rock Drive, west of North Fairfield Road, further described as Book Five, Page Five, Parcels 125, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 139, 140, 141, and 142 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. All right, does the applicant wish to address counsel on this? Mr. Barnett?
Hi, Jared Barnett, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard with Synergy and Mills Development. Excited to be here tonight in front of counsel. It's a lot of parcels, as you can hear, and it's taken us a lot of time to get to this point. So what you have in front of you tonight is roughly 35,000 square foot, single-story medical office building that we are working with Dayton Children's and two other pediatric and primary care practices that would occupy 100% of that facility. Project has started and stopped, I think it was like 17 total parcels that we acquired over time, and it takes time to acquire those, of course. We also, as you know, have the property to the north that the Lehman family used to own that connects this, that will allow the Lance Drive road to go through, so a lot of work on road design, both on Rock Drive and Lance Road. As you look at that site plan there, you know, Rock Drive really is kind of an alley right now, and what we're proposing as part of this development is that that would become more of your traditional road. Perfect, there's a zoomed-in shot of that. We are proposing, at the same time we do that, the installation of a traffic light, which we've done a warrant study and coordinated with your city engineering team on that being warranted, as well as aligning that with St. Luke's. While we're doing that, we want to take the opportunity to make that intersection as safe as possible and align those two drives. I know there's some representatives from St. Luke's here tonight to talk about that, and we're covering the expense of that traffic light, as well as the work that needs to be done on their site. So we want to get moving quickly. The three tenants would like to be in there this time next year, essentially, so we've got a lot of work to do between now and then. From a facade standpoint, this building will have a lot of the Dayton Children's branding as part of it. These are kind of the 2D ones, I think there's some additional 3D ones as well, there we go, that show kind of the entrance. We've done projects for them both on their main campus, on Valley Street, as well as at Springbrough, and this will pull a lot of that in, a lot of those elements into their brand, as well as the other two tenants, which we have signage for them on the corners of the building, as that shows as well. And the building does have room to expand, you know, when you work with the larger healthcare institutional players, they think, kind of like cities, they think in 10, 20, 30-year increments, so part of the reason we've acquired as much ground is so they can grow into it in the future. This initial phase will be purely outpatient, there's no ED or anything like that as part of this, it's just outpatient medical office. But an expansion of their existing services here in Beaver Creek will unfortunately be pulling them out of another building of ours and putting them here. Really, all three components, Dayton Children's and the two practices, are expanding quite a bit beyond where they are right now.
Okay.
That being said, I'll be here for any questions later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The case you have before you, it's actually two cases. It's PUD 17-4, it's the Rock Drive Medical Office Building, both a specific site plan and an amendment to the existing PUD. They're looking to add approximately three acres to the existing six-and-a-half acre PUD in order to fit the 35,000 square foot medical office building on a total of 9.3 acres. Projects located just northwest of the intersection of North Fairfield Road and Dayton-Zenia Road. You can see here is the full, the 9.3 acres throughout various different parcels. This photo was taken in March of 2018, so most of, if not all of these buildings are now gone, but this is the entire 9.3 acres. As per the amendment, the existing PUD is highlighted in yellow, and a small portion just to the south is also part of the PUD, and they're looking to add the two areas in purple, which one, this one here on the west is B2, and on the south is R1, a single-family residential. In terms of the land use plan, they're shown as neighborhood, community, commercial, and office, as well as office, I'm sorry, as well as single-family residential, but it's a transitional area, so it is an allowed use and it is compatible with the land use plan as is. Especially this portion, just to be clear, this portion over here is where they're proposing to put the stormwater retention pond, so the building is going to be in this location of the PUD, in the stormwater retention pond, a wet pond will be at this location. Again, here's the proposed site plan. They're proposing to construct about 300 feet of Rock Drive, and then you could see in the future, the future location of Rock Drive and Lance Road, but they're proposing to construct about, to this point, which is about 300 feet. And on that Rock Drive, they're proposing two access points. One would be a right-in and a right-out access point, which is closer to the future signalized intersection at Rock and North Fairfield, and then a full access point, which is closer to the main drive aisle in front of the proposed 35,000 square foot building. They're proposing a parking field out to the east of the building, as well as a parking field out to the south of the building, and as Jared mentioned, there's going to be a lot of vacant land to the north and the west of the building, and that's for expansion of the, either the office, the doctor's office building, which they're proposing on the two ends of the building, or the children's and/or the children's medical center, which they're proposing in the center of the building. There's also expansion area for parking lot, if they should need that, if they expand the building and find they need more parking. But what they're proposing here is 155 parking spaces, including handicap parking spaces out front, and they do meet the minimum requirements for ADA. One thing that Planning Commission asked, they didn't require a condition, but what they asked is, this corner right here, they felt was a little too close to the sidewalk, and so they were asking if we could get rid of that parking space and make that landscaping. They didn't see a problem with that. Their numbers aren't so low that they can't afford to lose that parking space. They didn't feel the need to put a condition on it, but that's something they wanted us to work with, and we don't see a problem with doing that. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. As the applicant stated, they're proposing a traffic signal to be located out here at Rock and North Fairfield. The development isn't contingent on the traffic signal from the city's standpoint, so we didn't condition that they have to do that before the building, but what we did add in the condition that if they do do the traffic signal, they have to re-align the entrance to St. Luke's Church, so that the church and the school can utilize that future traffic signal. You know, that's really important, that's a major traffic generator out in North Fairfield, both on Sundays, on the Sunday services, as well as when schools are coming in and out of session. So adding the traffic light is contingent on removing, or on moving the access point, or at least having an access point to it. This kind of gives a better idea, a color version of the site plan you just looked at, so you can see the wet pond is to the west, and we did add conditions that they have aeration devices, fountains, or some form of aeration device, so that this water doesn't just sit stagnant and grow moss, but actually is a water feature, especially when Lance Road in the future pushes through, you know, it'll be an aesthetic feature to drive by, is a pond with fountains and stuff, rather than a pond that's stagnant water. But again, you can see where they're proposing to stop the construction of Rock Drive, is about this location, and then the future alignment of Lance and Rock Drive here. They are proposing to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, on Rock Drive, as well as they did have a sidewalk connection from the existing sidewalk on North Fairfield Road into the proposed parking lot for children, so that it's accessible for pedestrians and bikers. Seen here is the proposed building, and you can see that on all four elevations, they do have majority of the building in this red brick, and then a gray brick base around all four sides of the elevation, and gray brick accent stripes on all four sides of the elevation. And then on the front entry feature, it's a curved metal panel, and then a metal awning that covers the main entrance, as well as the entrance on the east side of the, I'm sorry, the south side of the building. These are some 3D renderings that you saw earlier, it's the same materials, it's just to give you an idea how that's going to look from a perspective point. This is the metal awnings over the southern elevation, and then the metal awning over the drop-off area on the front elevation, and that curved metal panel. In terms of landscaping, as with most projects that this applicant does, or all projects that this applicant does, they show a good amount of landscaping, a good investment in landscaping on the site, both in the form of street trees along future Rock Drive and future Lance Road, as well as internal landscape islands with decorative trees and shrubs and grasses. So what they're proposing is an aesthetic landscaping plan to the site. Seen here is the proposed ground sign. They're proposing at 13 feet tall and about 100 square foot for the irregularly shaped sign face on a two-foot, or brick base. That's going to be, they're proposing to have that about this corner, around this corner here, and we add a condition and make sure that it's set back far enough, so that when you're trying to look to the north to get out on that light, or just looking north to get out, that that's not blocking your view of traffic for traffic and cars coming south. They're proposing wall signs on all four elevations, or four wall signs, three on the eastern elevation at 30, 50, and 90 square feet, and then one on the southern elevation over the awning entrance at about 60 square feet. So you can see the, one on each of the two ends, and then one over on this, over this entrance here. It's to scale with what they're proposing, and staff and Planning Commission doesn't see a problem with what the square footage that they're proposing in terms of the signage. There are 20 conditions in the motion for your consideration. There are two conditions in the proposed ordinance for your consideration, and procedurally, we just looked, have a public hearing, one public hearing for the amendment, and then close that, and then a second public hearing for the site plan, close that, and then two votes, one for each of the two actions. But again, staff and Planning Commission do recommend approval of both of these cases, and I'll be happy to answer questions following either the public hearings.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Can we actually have the public hearing on both at the same time, or we want to open and close?
I would have it on one, and then generally, take, close that one, then we can take action on the other one, then do the other one, and proceed that way.
So the first public hearing is on the PUD amendment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address that issue, that application? Please come forward, give us a name, an address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Bruce Squinton. I'm with St. Luke Parish at 1440 North Fairfield. The, I would just like to say that, based on one of the conditions that is associated with the PUD, that we have been working very closely with the developer. Obviously, our joint concerns are to enhance the flow of traffic with the use of a traffic light, while preserving the number of parking spaces that we have in our parking lot, also ensuring the safety of the vehicles and the pedestrians who are transiting in that parking lot, and also minimizing the cost that we would be subject to incur, and hoping that developer picks up all of that. That's all we have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address counsel on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Is there discussion from counsel on this particular portion? Anyone? All right.
Is there a site plan that shows how it would connect with the church? Are we on the site plan yet?
No, we're not on the site plan yet. We'll get that in just a minute.
But do you have one that's that big?
Yeah.
But he says we can do it after the next public hearing. Sorry.
All right. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I would move for approval of ordinance 19-22 and move it to the second and third readings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 17-4, amended 919, moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we will enter into the public hearing on PUD 17-1, specific site plan number one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this part of the And we will get that photo back up for you on word of line, and I think you already know that too, but we'll show it again. Anyone? All right, we will close the public hearing. And now, Councilmember Van, please.
Yeah, if you could just show the site plan to show how it would connect to St. Luke's, I think that would be nice.
Get to it, put it towards the end. This is an early version of what they, and how they, the last version I've got, where they show it, they're coming straight across, but they're still working out the final details on that, and this is by no means...
They've moved north just a little bit.
That's what, that's the most recent version I have. Now, again, the applicant and the St. Luke's are working out on what that final design would look like, and this is not, this is not part of the plan, it's not in the plans in terms of being held to the motion.
I just think it's really nice that the developer is working with the church, and it's, I just was valuing that, so...
Yes.
Sure.
But that design is contingent upon the traffic signal, so if it's relocated...
If they want to put a traffic signal, they'll have to do something similar to this.
Right, they want to put traffic signal, they have to, and you would have to approve that.
Right, that would be all part of the engineering, yeah.
Correct. Okay. Anyone else have any questions on the specific site plan?
Well, another one on traffic. So, do you know, does this connect to where the funeral home is?
It won't, I mean, eventually it will, but right now, they're only building the first stub of Rock Drive, the first 300 feet, but eventually, the long-term plan is to extend...
So Rock Drive is the one that will connect eventually around?
Right here, you can see, I believe this is the back parking lot for the funeral home back there. Is that where you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Newcomers, I believe that's the far northern parking lot of that, and you can see the intent is to, when Lance Road extends, it'll extend down, and then ultimately down to Dayton-Zenia Road. But this project only includes that first 200 feet of Rock.
And so it won't be in 2020, it'll be?
Date on, I mean, in the future.
At some future time.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to...
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I did have a question also in regards to this potential intersection, the potential light. Thinking as, traveling northbound on North Fairfield, coming from Dayton-Zenia. Do we anticipate with adding this new light, during peak hours, traffic backing up essentially to Dayton-Zenia, or is that a further distance than I'm thinking? And the reason I'm asking, when I traveled north on North Fairfield, on the south side of Dayton-Zenia, coming up from the Bowlin Alley, a lot of times during peak hours, traffic is backed up very far, I mean, to the Bowlin Alley sometimes, and Frishes. I'm just concerned that if we add a light there at St. Luke's, that we're just stacking traffic up, and then we may have some problems there at that intersection.
Ultimately, this, the light here will be most utilized once Lance Road gets extended.
Right.
And so the intent of Lance Road getting extended all the way down to Dayton-Zenia will be actually for a bypass around that intersection, so that bypass will help the level of, or the volume of traffic at...
That's true.
...North Fairfield and Dayton-Zenia. And, I mean, we're probably, I think, say a good 600, 700 feet from that intersection.
Yeah, I feel like it's a good distance, but just knowing how much it backs up on the other side of Dayton-Zenia?
And the engineers will constantly be looking at it to see if the timing needs to be changed to prevent any of that, that excessive backup, and it'll be part of a whole system along the North Fairfield Road.
Have we done a traffic study along that route recently?
I'd have to defer that one to the engineer.
Sorry, I don't mean to make you get up there.
As Jared mentioned, they did not only a warrant analysis, but also did a study on how this signal would impact progression up and down North Fairfield Road, and we actually had somebody review their report too, so it was kind of double-checked, and kind of the outcome of the report is, it's going to have very little impact as far as delaying vehicles moving up and down North Fairfield Road.
Good. Perfect. That's all for me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to reiterate the gratitude for the applicant working with St. Luke's Church. That's my home parish, so just on a personal selfish note, I really appreciate that. It is kind of difficult on a Sunday morning to get out at 10 o'clock mass, going left, and I think adding a building across the street will just increase that flow. I've also had a lot of questions about what is going in that space, so I do appreciate you working with the church, because I know we had a few concerned residents and members, so thank you for all the work that you've done on this. That's it for me.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? You have to read the motion in front of you, too. No, you have to read, this has to be read.
I would move, for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of the specific site plan for Rock Drive, MOB. On the basis that the city council finds the facts submitted with the application and the accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplemental conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, and there are 20. I further move that this motion and all of its conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs, ordinance 19-20.
This is the third reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 137 Weapons Control of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new Chapter 137 Weapons Control of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. This was sponsored by Councilmember Litteral. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 19-23.
This is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the filing of the Articles and incorporation of the Beaver Creek Development Corporation, adopting the Articles and incorporation of the Beaver Creek Development Corporation, and approving the designation of the Beaver Creek Development Corporation as a designated development agency for the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, is this your plate?
Yeah, I'll briefly introduce the concept, and I'll let Mr. McQ answer any technical questions in terms of the legalese of the ordinance, but as you know, we've, as it's been presented a couple times over the last 18 months, we are looking at the creation of a Beaver Creek Development Corporation, which will serve as a private 501(c)(3) arm of economic development for the city. Primary purposes, again, what we're looking for, the creation of this board is for the facilitation of the return of vacant, abandoned, and tax-foreclosed properties to be productive, tax-paying, economic uses, and on which would benefit the public. So some of these things we're looking at, again, we're not looking at a full-blown CSC, we're focused on really the acquisition of property, and in order to do that, if there's anything that's foreclosed on, the other city should... anything that's foreclosed on, if the city should get any property, the Beaver Creek Development Corporation could facilitate that. The use of that property will, a little more creatively than the city could. Obviously, none of that can be done without the agreement of the, between the corporation and the city, so that will be one of the following steps that should occur in order for us to transfer property. It'd have to have an agreement with the City of Beaver Creek's city council, so if there's any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McHugh, you want to give us the details?
Certainly, Mayor and counsel, what you have before you are, just, this is the first of two ordinances. One is the Articles of Incorporation. This simply sets forth what the corporation name is, where it's located, and very briefly sets forth what the powers of the corporation are. Strictly follows straight out of the Ohio Vice Code, and it's referenced in their 1724-10 is one of the sections, two actually has the powers too. And what is important about this also is that under Ohio Vice Code, a city can designate a development corporation such as this as its economic development arm, and one thing to bear in mind with respect to this, and this is the articles, but when you get the code also, I'll just bring it up to this point too, for the public, is that it is required by statute that 40% or two out of five have to be, and you can have more than that, but it has to be at least 40%, have to be associated, has to be elected official and another official of the city. In the, what version you have, it will be 60%, so effectively, nothing realistically is going to happen with respect to this development corporation that is not going to be approved as an offshoot of the city and council, so it's, that's how it's set up, and that would be my recommendation, keep it that way, but in the future, if you need to change it, you can. But as an economic development arm, it does give you flexibility as a city to get involved in development situations that are otherwise more difficult as a city. You have certain authority to negotiate and rules that give you a little more, just more flexibility, so...
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments from, now, this is the first reading. We typically at first reading do allow public hearing input. Is there anybody here present tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will go on. Do we have any comments from counsel, questions?
Just a quick comment, I know that we've had conversations and work sessions for a long time about this particular topic, and this is another one of those tools for the City of Beaver Creek that we want to put in the toolbox, and this is just one thing that we've been missing over the years, and this is an opportunity as we look to not only grow but protect what we have, you know, to put something to use that we can utilize in the future. So, this is, I think this is some good material. I might question our legal advisor on a couple of things in the sections between the first and second readings, but overall, it's right where it needs to be at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to move to second, third?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question, sorry. In reading the articles, Article 3 for Board of Directors, do we think that directors serving for a year of one term is sufficient, or do we maybe want to consider doing two-year terms? I know that, you know, the mayor, or if the mayor declines, another member of council, the city manager, and the planning and economic developer may stay consistent, but the appointee with commercial real estate experience and the one Beaver Creek resident, I didn't know if it would be more beneficial to maybe have them serve two-year terms as opposed to just changing them out every year, and I didn't know if that was a discussion council wanted to have on that.
Yeah, well, one thing, it is uncommon to actually change out.
Okay.
Traditionally, I mean, it can occur, but generally, these are the type of boards, well, you know, some of the positions on, really on the code now, are, you know, certain placeholders, like the mayor or a member of council, so obviously you have to be on council. But in otherwise, otherwise, the positions, people you choose tend to stay, but that's, you know, if you want to make longer terms, certainly can do that.
That year is fine, if that's fine with council. I just wanted to bring up that point, because I wasn't sure if it would make sense to, you know, if someone decided they didn't want to serve anymore, or if we had more interest one year than another, if it made sense reevaluating every single year appointees as far as the real estate experience and somebody from the city themselves, but again, I'm fine with one year if that's okay, if that's what's mainly standard, that's fine. Just a point I wanted to raise.
It's really a rolling one year, because in Section 4 down there in the code, you know, until you're basically death removal or resignation. So, the intent is, you continue on.
Right. Not a problem. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 19-23 on to the second and third readings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 19-24.
This is a first reading of an ordinance approving and adopting the Code of Regulations of the Beaver Creek Development Corporation and approving the designation of the Beaver Creek Development Corporation as a designated development agency for the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. And of course, this is a follow-up to the ordinance that we just approved. Any further comments from staff on this? Okay, so this establishes to the Code of Regulations for the Beaver Creek Development Corporation.
Yeah, I do have one, when, at the last, when we did have a work session on this, based upon comments, I did revise Section 2 of Article 3 to provide, because comments were made by council, that we'd like to have the mayor, or if the mayor declines, then it'd be a council member appointed by council. So, as I originally drafted, it was a member of council appointed by council, it, based on comments at that work session, it's the mayor, or should the mayor choose not to, just feel that's not something that person wants to do, then it becomes a council member chosen by council.
Sure.
So, that is one change from the work session version that you saw.
All right, thank you. All right, any further discussion on this?
Motion to approve 19-24.
Second.
To move to second.
And third readings.
Second, third, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-24, and moving it on to the second and third readings. Did we have asked for public input at this point? This is, I don't think I did. I'm going to back up a second. This is the first reading of an ordinance, and so we allow public input. If there's anybody here this evening that would like to give us input on this application. Now, thank you, we'll move forward. I do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-24, moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There will be another public hearing at our next regular scheduled meeting. Next is Resolution 19-63.
This is a resolution to authorize the submittal of the Grinch Hall Road at I-675 Interchange Project and Miami Valley Research Park infrastructure improvements for the prioritization through the Dayton Regional Priority Development and Advocacy Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Staff has recently informed that PDAC applications are currently being accepted for new projects, and in reviewing the requirements of projects, we have two are recommending for submittal. The first one would be the, involving the Grinch Hall Road at I-675 interchange. As you know, it's currently a half interchange, and our long-term goal is to convert that to a full-access interchange. The first step in that, there's a couple of studies that would need to be conducted and approved by ODOT, and we would recommend submitting an application requesting the funding for those studies. The estimated cost is $500,000. The second application is for a project in the research park. There's a 53-acre parcel of ground located north of Research Boulevard and just to the west of I-675, where it's, we feel it's a very nice site that has a lot of potential, however, there's a lack of utilities to the site. So, we would propose a project to run sanitary sewer to the 53-acre parcel, as well as the construction of 200 or 300 feet of roadway to help to open up that land to develop, but make it more shovel-ready. The overall estimated cost of that work is $400,000, where we would recommend a 20% local share, where we would ask for the $320,000 in grant money. And with that, I would ask to be, you consider approval of the resolution so these applications can move forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions?
I just would like to say thank you to Mr. Mooreman and his staff, again, without the grants and without the Regional Planning Commission and our involvement there, a lot of the roadwork and infrastructure improvements that we have would not be possible in our city, so thank you for your excellent work, the entire team, because this is, you know, a team effort to, you know, have great roads in our community, so that's it.
Anyone else?
I think this will be a real positive step, moving forward to looking at other parcels that we have that can really benefit the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. I think they're both great applications, and of course, the research park, we've been so stagnant there for so many years because we do not have the infrastructure that is needed, so if I had a crystal ball, I'd like to see that one, but they're both great projects. All right, any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass Resolution 19-63.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-63. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 19-64.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a park maintenance agreement with the Beaver Creek Township Park District.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Good evening. So, this is, for the past two years, we've been operating and maintaining two of the park district parks, that's Victory Park and Community Park, which is actually now Angels Pass Park. So, this agreement just kind of continues on that maintenance and operation. The big change we did make was instead of keeping it a one year, it's now a two-year, so. Happy to answer any questions about that agreement.
Questions? We're just the manpower, they provide the substance as far as funding?
That's correct. So, yes. So, basically, whatever we, whatever work we do, they pay us dollar for dollar. That's correct.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 19-57.
64.
I'm sorry? I just read what you typed. 19-64.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-64. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Next, Resolution 19-50.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Green County Board of Commissioners regarding the use and operation of Rotary Park.
Good evening. So, this is the back half of Rotary Park. Earlier, could have been this summer, we passed legislation for the city to take on and own the front of Rotary Park, which was owned by Beaver Creek Township. So, we are still working on getting those deeds signed, but then the front of Rotary Park will be the City of Beaver Creek. Once you cross that bridge, it becomes Green County, and so this agreement is allowing the City of Beaver Creek to operate and maintain the back half of that park, and basically, we're not doing any changes or anything like that, it's what we've been doing, operating Softball Diamonds, the shelter, everything like that, except instead of the agreement with the township, it's now with the Green County.
Okay. Questions?
So...
Can we hit a surcharge?
So, the roads back there are in need of repair.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The roadway?
That's correct.
So, now that we have a new partner, would they like to help us resurface that road?
I can absolutely ask them if that's something that they were interested in. They've always owned the back half of that park.
I know, but you could just, whereas the new partnership, and I would just urge them to take a hold of their responsibility for...
Absolutely. Yeah, we can discuss that with them.
Thanks.
Sure, you're welcome.
And then there's a little bit of flooding on that road, too?
Yes, there is.
They might want to think about that, too.
Yes. So, as we, if we're able to redo the road, we'll take a look at the flooding, because the whole place is a flood zone.
Anyone else?
I would just like to comment, and I've said this over my last two terms, that it's very confusing for the citizens of the city and the township, because we have Beaver Creek Township Parks, we have Green County Parks, the Park, Green County Park District, we have the City of Beaver Creek Parks, and it would really be nice if we could all work together at some point and have some type of merging of these, so that we could work together and have, I'm not saying a metro park, I don't want to be like Montgomery County, but we have so many resources that we should be coordinating with each other and having something where instead of the citizens always having to have a different park district or a levy, it's very confusing, and I just think that this is a perfect opportunity, because the front half is ours, the back half is Green County, and it just goes right back into what I've always been saying, so. It's my last term, so it's the last time, you all have to hear about that. But I really think for the taxpayers and for the citizens, you know, it would be a win-win if we could find a common ground in that. With that, I'm done.
And I will say, the back half is Green County sanitary, it's not the parks.
Yeah, there you go. So, there you have it.
Anyone else? All right, do I hear a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-50. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is liquor permits. Chief? It's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a transfer liquor permit to WT Pads LLC doing business as CBCB Bar and Grill. Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of request to transfer the D5, D6 liquor permit from CBCB Beaver Creek LLC to WT Pads LLC, doing business as CBCB Bar and Grill, 2495 Commons Boulevard, Suite A. Background checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control were conducted for the on-the-business officer shareholders for this request. Staff's recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Decision items, Mr. Landrum, I believe this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to briefly review, I know you guys, I was not here at the work session, well, a couple of work sessions ago, and then, of course, I was at the retreat that we have, annual retreat, where I presented the logo to council, which everybody actually, 7-0, no vote of it, but everybody liked it and enjoyed it. So, tonight is the, to bring up public, because a lot of this was done in work session, which are public, but they're not televised, so to bring everybody up before we have our vendor come up and show us, we began this project in January 2018, so this just didn't happen just a couple of months ago, it's been over a long period, and these are the same things I presented to council to show you the resource. So, we started in January 18th, we've had several presentations before council, we have had several groups, committees that have came together. The last committee that came together actually ultimately had some things that they said, here's what we want, so we went back out a second whole time to review it again, and then we made several, several changes with different input of the committee, again, different input by outside sources, people who love the committee, I don't want to start thanking people, but Tabitha Gildon of Decoy Arts, she was on the committee, she also is an artist, so she had a lot of good input, I think, to council members for their input and help with this as well, and actually, Tabitha had her, what do you call it, design assistant, graphic arts professional, actually have a look at it and gave great suggestions on a few things. So, thanks for all the input and the work that's went into it. So, we've had many different changes here, and tonight actually brings us to the point of... point of coming, coming forward with the logo, which I'll let our vendor, Dan Schlegel of, let's see if I can get it, Schlegel Creative Resources, come forward, and I will, give me a second here, I'll open what we have.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. As Mr. Landrum mentioned, we have been working on this project for quite some time. We want to make sure that we have consensus, or we have consensus now. We are a branding company, and I just, I guess I just want to emphasize the importance of being consistent, especially with a new brand. What I have here on the screen is the initial branding guidelines, which are set forth to help keep the, the logo and the brand consistent. So, we just want to kind of flip through here. You can, you can go ahead and flip a little bit.
There it is.
Yeah. So, on the top right is the primary stacked logo, and we call that a lockup, which means to keep brands consistent, there shouldn't be any alterations, distortions to brands. The bottom is just an alternative horizontal presentation of that. And in this guideline, what I'm going to be showing is some applications of how the logo will be used. So, some of those will still be tweaked a little bit possibly, but it'll just give you an idea going forward how that, how the brand will actually be used in, in the future. Obviously, with guidelines, we've got some very specific colors and some applications. You'll see in this, in the rest of the book, that the colors that are used actually in the mark, and we call that the B-mark or the mark that has the Beaver in it, there are three main colors in there. And when we address some of the administrative aspects of Beaver Creek, we emphasize the blue. Go ahead and flip that. And just showing also what it looks like on a reverse background. And then, on the right side, it's just the logo icon itself, the B icon itself. With the brand, you know, part of the brand also is the type fonts and some of the colors. The top colors are the primary colors of the logo, and the bottom colors are suggested secondary colors that can be used on publications, website, you know, some other applications. It gives you kind of a, a range of a color palette. And then, on the left, it's just a concept of what business cards, stationary business envelopes might look like. On the right, a theme line has been presented. That certainly can be updated. I know this, that was the working theme line that we worked with throughout the present, throughout the, the process.
And that can be changed.
And it could definitely be changed or updated in the future.
So, we're not approving, we're not approving that tonight?
No.
And here are, and actually, from here forward, are concepts, just showing how the logo might be applied to, you know, to different items. On the left, a gateway sign, signage for the government center. On the right, possible signs, street signage. And as far as departments on the left, we're just going to show how departments can be called out. On the right, we show how the public service would look on their van, a police vehicle, license plate, and a police uniform patch.
Which, again, all those are concepts.
Exactly. Yeah, the colors may certainly change on, on some of those items. Here, we're just showing some design concepts. On the left, it's a design concept of a potential ad, some type of an ad. On the right is a concept for potential street banners that might be located at core Wearables, you know, things that, part of the community, you know, it kind of builds community pride. There is a lapel pin. I know that will probably be changed a little bit, but just to give you an idea, that's what that oval, oval thing there is. Okay, that, with parks, it's, it's definitely more integrated into the, into the Beaver Creek brand. And you'll notice that we pull out the green in the logo. And you can see that even in the, in the one-color version. And the reason why we do this, too, is, you know, we have horizontal and, and stacked logos because there's always applications where you need it in a, in a different order. And then, we show it in black and white color and then just a, a one-color version. And here again are some applications. We emphasize the green on the left with the stationary package. On the right is possible flyers, ads. As you can see, though, it keeps that consistent brand. Potential park staff, perhaps, wearables. And now, we come to the golf club. And as you may have guessed, we use the third color for the golf club. Once again, some of the lockups of how the logo can be used. And left, once again, stationary package. On the right, flyers, ads. Potential merchandise that can be sold, potential signage. And in this presentation tonight, what we are showing pretty much all the do's, the final publication will show some of the don'ts, how not to use the logo. And that is not... There is two more pages.
I have it.
If you refresh...
Yeah, hold on here.
Actually, 42 pages to the document.
I'll get it one way or the other.
If not, I can talk through it.
Give me one second here.
Beaver Creek Senior Center actually have a brand, and once again, there's the logo brand lockup.
Is that it?
Yes. Be happy to hear any questions.
Is there a Beaver Creek flag?
Does this logo go on a Beaver Creek flag?
We didn't talk about that, but I mean, that would be easy enough.
Do we have a flag?
Oh, okay. I don't think so. Well, you showed the banner, the pole banner, but no flag.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
Anyone else comments?
I just, I know we've had several discussions and work sessions on this project. Have we put this on our website or any public comment or anything like that? I'm just curious. I couldn't remember.
No, it's been totally kept under wraps.
Anyone else? We're asking...
I'm pleased with the, with the logo. I'm not quite certain about the vibrant, versatile city. I don't know about those words. I mean, they might be fine, but I don't still know about that quite yet.
Yeah, and that certainly could be changed, and that was, that was the, the theme line that was given to us to use for, just for the presentation, so...
I like, I like the logo, though. It's fine.
All right, is...
As I say, I know a lot of folks have put a lot of work into this. A couple council members and former council members and representative from Decoy Arts. I appreciate everyone that's volunteered to step up and, and take a look at this. This is definitely different than what we have. I mean, if you look just behind the mayor and city manager, you can see the colors and logo that we've got today. So, this is exciting to some degree. I'm not a guy that likes a lot of these changes, but, you know, I, I do appreciate wanting to move forward and, and change things for a crisp and modern look, so some good, exciting things here.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed working with you guys on this. I know Councilmember Little and I had some conversations back and forth with everybody involved, and we really had a good time looking at a new brand for the city, and we're both very happy with the outcome. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Well, I'll just echo the fact that there was a lot of time and effort went in by a lot of different people, so I appreciate that. And this, as I said before, this is a decision item, so do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the city logo redesign as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the city logo design as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to council time. How about Councilman Curran? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I really enjoyed the retirement party for Lee. Senior Citizen Center had a nice crowd, a lot of fun, and special congratulations for the many years that he's put in for the City of Beaver Creek, doing an outstanding job for the seniors.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman...
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Real brief, I just remind everyone at home that one week from tomorrow is Election Day, and I appreciate everyone getting out to vote, you know, study up on the issues. The city's got a few out there for charter amendments. There's a number of candidates up as well. Appreciate everyone just doing their homework and being an educated voter as you go into the polls. So, next Tuesday is the big day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
In September, I want to bring up the tornado navigator position. In September, we had six city council members that asked the city manager to come up with some options, and one of the options could be do nothing, but we asked for options. And this doesn't really have anything to do with the election because five of us potentially won't be here in January, but the five of us are voting for the budget that will be in place in 2020. And if we don't put money in the budget to help our neighborhoods recover from the tornado in 2020, then nothing will be done until 2021. And the budget will be defined in November and approved by city council in December. So, it's critical that we have this conversation. So, there's, there's a lot of different things that were in the potential job description that could, that we could have discussed in a work session, but we weren't able to because we didn't have the city manager there. We just need to move forward on helping the neighborhood. One of the things that's really important is, for example, the, the streets were damaged by the trucks that moved in and out and took all those limbs and, and trees away. Some of the, some of the streets there are just swales with the street in the middle, and so the edges have been broken. There's a lot of cracks in them because of the heaviness of the trucks and by things that were drug acrossed. So, you know, one of the things, which we do have Public Works who can work on the streets, and, and this council could say to the city manager and Public Works, let's, let's make a priority to look at those streets and see if these can be the top of the list for street improvements that are done in 2020. I think it would be a good thing in our budget if we do that. The other thing, another thing that's, is important is, we, we talked tonight about when Miami Valley Regional Planning has transportation money, road improvement money, we already have a staff person assigned who has all that data and preliminary project ideas in, in his file. And, and so, he can, he can bring those forward and say, here's some things that we need to do in that neighborhood, and, and, and here's, here's the data, because we're going to have to have census data. We've never actually had block data in, in Beaver Creek because we've never done this level of project before. And so, I asked the staff if we had block data, and it just isn't something. So, we need somebody who can, and unfortunately, the 2010 census was a long time ago, and the 2020 census data won't be here for another two years. So, we're probably going to have to have somebody that goes out door-to-door and figures out what we need in that neighborhood, knows who the people in the neighborhood are, and, and what, what we can use for their, if, if the projects are based on income, if they're moderate income, and a lot of them will be moderate income, and that's, but we'll have to have some, some inventory, some survey of the people who live in there so that we can capture those funds. If we don't have that data, we will not be able to capture the funds. And the way Jeff Mormon can go after those Miami Valley Regional Planning funds, it's because he's got the information and the data, and he can go after them. And the other thing that's important, when I, when I talked to the building code people about what, what they were seeing as they were doing their inspections, and actually, Green County Building Code Department should be a partner with our residents. They should really value having those inspections because those inspectors are trying to save them from having bad things happen. But, but I talked to them, and I said, is there anything that the city could or should be doing? And, and, and it was the, the building department that suggested maybe, and this is a policy decision, maybe we should be registering even the, the tree trimmers because there's been a few scam artists that have gone out and collected money and not done what they said, or there's been a few building contractors who've gone out and switched materials or, or didn't have, the contract wasn't written clearly enough. So, we could, we could choose, like Katerine or some other cities, to have a registry of, of approved, of, or of, some sort of a registry of, of contractors. And we would have that policy and decide what that policy would be. I know that, you know, I, I thought it was great on Bob Stone's Facebook last week. He said, leadership is not being in charge, it's about taking care of the people in your charge. And here we are, the city council, and we want to take care of our citizens. We care about our citizens. And here, we need to be ready so that, so that we can take care of them. So, I want to further discuss, and I would urge the city manager, the budget's going to come up in two weeks, and I would really, I wanted us to have this discussion before that so that we kind of gave him some guidance, whether it was going to be part-time or full-time or not at all. I mean, he can give us a, a walk-away, do-nothing option. That's okay. We can have that option, but, but we should have other options, too. And so, I would like this to go forward. There are some people in the audience that can talk about how the tornado hit their neighborhood and what they might need done. We can either listen to them now, or we can wait until citizen comments at the end.
And we'll follow the agenda.
Okay. But I, I just would, I would really, since we had a 6-0, our, our city council asked the city manager to provide options, and I think it's important that those options come to us. It's the bottom line.
Councilmember Rushing, comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this moment to thank the Green County Alder, David Graham. He hosted a presentation on how your property taxes work. It was a very informative event, but there is an action item, and that is, he's working with Representative Peralas on a bill in Columbus that would allow county alders the ability to adjust the values of damaged homes. And this case is very timely, as we all know, with the severe damage of several neighborhoods due to the tornado. Currently, right now, the county alder is unable, due to statute, to adjust those values unless a form is completed by the actual property owner. As you can imagine, trying to reach a property owner in this time is difficult, so having this as a tool for county alders to lessen the burden of their home or their real property that's damaged is another tool, a toolbox that the county alder can use. So, I just encourage, if you're interested into seeing if that goes through the House. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Little?
Well, it's Halloween week, so I would just like to remind everyone how important trick-or-treat is to many families. It's a tradition, so just please be careful in the neighborhoods and along the roads because the kids will be out. the neighborhoods and along the roads, because the kids will be out, and, you know, they just run and dart, and they're having a good time, and they don't think about, you know, cars and vehicles and those kinds of things. So, motorcycles, you name it. It might be warm for them, who knows? But just a reminder that the children will be out, and some adults probably too. Trick-or-treating, so want to keep that in mind. Also, along with that particular thing, with time change is coming up this coming weekend, so just remind everyone to set your clocks, because Sunday is the time change. So, buckle up for winter, people.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. I just want to give a few shouts of congratulations. The Creek Cheer Varsity Competition and Game Day squads are both heading to Nationals in February, so congratulations to them. And also, congratulations to the Girls and Boys Beaver Creek Cross-Country squads who qualified for state at Regionals in the state of Ohio this past weekend. So, congratulations to them as well. I also wanted to thank our Beaver Creek PD and our COPP crew. A few weeks ago, I'm sure people were aware that there were some spots shut down Long Range Road for a car that drove off at 35. I think I got there a little after all of this happened, because our police were on the scene, our COPPs were out there, and they were freezing those poor people, all of them out there, doing hard work, making sure everyone was able to get rerouted. So, I want to thank them for all the hard work that they did. I think Officer Diaz made me freeze in my car just looking at him because he didn't have his coat on. But I'm very grateful for all the work that they did. And just a reminder for city council, excuse me, that to submit your evaluations for the city manager and city clerk, in the email that I sent out, there are two separate links, one to each survey, so make sure you're going in and checking out each survey link. I know a couple of people have already responded to one but not the other, so you have plenty of time to do it, but just wanted to remind you that both links are in the same email, but to separate evaluations. So, that's it for me.
All right. Very good. On my end, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Couple of things that went on. Grace Hope Church had a fundraiser for the tornado victims at Shaw School. I got a letter sitting here from them, and said they raised $1,200. So, that's a, that'll be a nice effort. True Hotel, Colonel Glenn, True by Hilton, had its grand opening. They put on quite an impressive opening. Last Thursday, the city hosted the International Officers from Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. Again, they do that about quarterly, and it's always an interesting and eye-opening experience. Joanna, excuse me, Vice Mayor Garcia and I hosted the Girl Scouts here last week, or week before it is, and always have a ball. And the Vice Mayor was the leader of that expedition at that time, and so she got the girls up here and got them involved in debating a ordinance of some sort. And so, smart group of young ladies.
Very much so.
Yes. The Pizza Dive and the businesses along Dayton-Zenia Road had their kickoff for the Halloween festivities. They served 3,000 slices of pizza. For every kid in costume, they got free pizza, and it's always a fun event. I usually serve pizza for a while, and this time, I think I stayed a little longer than I should have, because my shoulder just about fell off. But it was, but it's always fun. We have a good time. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Van's comments, and there's, Councilmember Van's comments are certainly valid comments. There's no way that they're not. We have had a disaster. We have to deal with it the best way we can, whether it be financially or, you know, limitations or otherwise. We, I believe, and I'm not, you know, there are always new ways to look at things, but I think right now, we are doing everything that we can. We have staff members attending numerous different meetings to try to figure out ways to help. And so, hopefully, I understand there's some people here tonight that, you know, that are going to speak to us. And that is what, that's what gets councils' attention, is when the people come and say, we need this, or we need, whether, it doesn't matter whether it's a tornado relief or whether it's a stop sign. The people need to come and let us know what it is they need. So, I'm going to stop with that for now. And we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, short report. First thing, of course, I think we already mentioned, October 31st, trick-or-treat, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Did mention on Facebook today that there is a, at the Green, there's another opportunity, trick-or-treat at the Green, I think, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yeah. So, there's another opportunity of a different place. I think right now, the weather may be spotty Thursday night, so there's another opportunity. Maybe tomorrow night might be the choice. It said rain's supposed to stop in the afternoon on trick-or-treat, but you know how that goes. It's Ohio. Curb and resurfacing program that 2019 completed the week of October 21st. This year, the program completed curb repairs and paving work of 10.66 centerline miles. That's a little under where we've been in the last couple of years, and that's directly related with the tornado, due to the funding issues, because we had to not do the alternative streets that we've normally have always went to the alternative streets when we had money left over and time left over. But some other items, such as minor items like manhole adjustments and so forth, and some striping will be finished up over this next week or so. And then, with the increase, though, if you look over the past several years, the increase in resurfacing efforts have increased. Records show that 52% of our payments in the city are now less than 10 years old, and 90% of city payments being less than 20 years old. We do look at our pavement and address every single year, the condition. We definitely will look at the impacted tornado areas with the conditions. Work order was put in for a pothole on Rushton today. Rushton, actually, that area back there was repaved not that long ago. Rushton was purposefully not repaved at that time because of some gas lines that were going to be installed. So, again, we never want to put new pavement down and then come up and dig it up. That's not a good plan. So, we purposefully had delayed Rushton for the repaving, so, but that is on the list to be soon be done, but based on, I don't believe the gas lines are completed as of yet. So, we're at kind of the mercy of veteran and so forth. So, good news is that I think everybody was happy about Dayton-Zenia by Kroger. That's smooth. There'll still be some manhole covers being fixed, but wow, what an improvement. Shakertown Road Extension, the contractor began, to begin work along Factory Road, along Yellow Brick Road, the week of October 28th. There are no road closures planned, but there could be some delays when traveling through this work zone. And as the weather permits, the contractor anticipates having these areas paved before the end of 2019 season. Not unless we see snow or really cold weather quicker, so let's hope not. Or did I just jinx us on that? Always a very good ceremony, Veterans Day Ceremony, Monday, the 11th, at 2:00 p.m. Speaker Colonel Adam B. Willis, Commander of 445th Airlift Wing at Wright-Patt. And the programs also go include Wright-Patterson Air Force Band of Flights, Brass Quintet, Spirit of Freedom. And then, how you say, A1C, Mehlman?
Airman first class.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There you go. Airman first class. Okay, thank you. See? You can tell the non-military versus the military. Sorry. My dad was a Marine, but he didn't teach me the acronyms. We'll sing the National Anthem. Of course, limited bleachers are available, but a lot of people will end up standing or bring in their chair. It's always a good sight. We'll, let's see, Monday, November 11th, too far away to see the forecast, but rain or shine, we'll be there. And that's all I have tonight.
Colonel Willis is the commander of the unit that flies the C-17s around our community that sometimes seem a little close to our rooftops, but that'd be interesting to hear his talk. All right. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments. And at citizen comment time, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and/or you can have time donated, up to a total of nine minutes. And so, we would ask that if you have something to address council on tonight, that you come up, give us a name and address.
Good evening. My name is Christine Polium. I live at 2310 Clubside Drive, right off Kemp Road, next to Shaw School. My daughter, who's 34, her 10-year-old daughter and I are creek-strong survivors. I have $50,000 damage to the outside of my house. We need help over there. I am, by profession, an intensive care ICU-registered nurse. I'm familiar with triaging, very familiar with triaging. I was in charge. I am a mother of seven children. I lived in, I was born and raised in northern and central Illinois. I lived in York, Nebraska, in the middle of Nebraska, for 12 years. I'm familiar with tornadoes. I didn't expect it to find me in Ohio. I dodged tornadoes with my children for decades over there. It came to be a joke at my house. If there's vanilla wafers and milk in the house, it must be tornado season, because I had to take seven little children down and hide under the stairwell and keep everybody quiet during tornado warnings and keep them from being afraid. I don't buy vanilla wafers anymore. They're all grown up, moved away. But the day of the tornado, somebody else in my house bought vanilla wafers. I should have seen this coming. I should have known that we were in tornado season, but we weren't. And my daughter and I, they were in bed. I got them up. We went to the basement, laid on the laundry room floor. I think I need to clean my laundry room more often. That's a dirty place to have to lay down. We spent the most terrifying hour of our life. We are fine. My house was severely damaged on the outside. Everything has been started and finished incorrectly. My contractor voided all my warranties on my roof and on my siding. I have had to fire him. I've had to hire a attorney. I am $10,000 out of pocket already because they didn't have to bring my roof up to code. But I had six fractures in my roof that they just covered over with new shingles. I had a broken truss in my attic that nobody bothered to go up and inspect, because he came in his good shirt that day that he was inspecting to do my estimate. He didn't want to get his shirt dirty in my attic. So, he didn't go up there and say, I have a truss snapped in my attic where a tree landed on my roof. We have contractor problems. We have problems with inadequate work being done. My son works for a restoration company. It's an international company in Michigan. This was his company he referred me to. I called them. They came out of their Fairfield office. They brought a contractor out of Kentucky to do this job. The man was rude. He was insolent to me. He called me a pain-in-the-blank because I didn't like what he was doing with the holes in my roof. I ended up firing them after the siding was done. I understand trauma. I understand physiological and psychological shock. Nothing prepares you for surviving a tornado. It's like being inside a blender when you're trying to make crushed ice out of cubes. That's what it sounds like. Things are hitting you from every direction. You have a loss of sensation, a loss of direction, and a terror is going to come through you, through your house. I was well-educated in what to do in the case of a tornado. We keep bicycle helmets in our basement. Most of the deaths in tornado are from head injuries. Do people know that? We wore bicycle helmets on the floor. My granddaughter was terrified. My daughter and I were trying to protect her, and there was nothing we could do, except just lay there and pray. Things were hitting from every direction. You completely lose your orientation, completely. You can't tell one sound from another. Things are ripping and smashing and banging. It's a horrifying experience. I have the ability to go through that and come up without PTSD. My 10-year-old granddaughter does not. She is terrified. There are a lot of services we're offering, mental health, and we have sought some of those for her. Shaw Elementary has a special space where kids can go during storm time at school. It's called, it's their sensory room, and I am assuming it's for their autistic kids who need time out, need to go into the sensory room. I'm assuming that's what it is. She's been to the sensory room twice already this fall, because when a storm comes up, there's a group of children in there, mostly fourth grade girls, who are still so badly terrorized that they have to go to a private silent place. The community has things we're going to be facing. This is a storm that never quits giving.
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure.
Can you maybe ask one of the audience members to donate some time to you? Your three minutes are up.
Three minutes, no. Okay.
The young man in the front row there, could you come up and just give us your name and address and say you donate your three minutes?
Hello, I'm Reed Lloyd. I live at 3112 Stoli Court. I'll donate my three minutes.
Thank you. Now, please go.
Yes. We had, started having an oil leak in my car. All of a sudden. At the storm, when the storm hit, my giant birch tree came down on top of my car. But some of it was shoved up underneath the car and broke the oil filter. We did not know this. We should have had our car checked all over, but when they took the tree off, the car drove, so I thought, kind of shoot, I wish they had destroyed that car, because that was old. I wanted a better car, but that didn't work out. So, there are things that people after a storm need. They don't even know what they need. I mean, the rescue people came in. They were awesome. They countered heads and says, is everybody okay? Do you need any medication? Everybody was awesome, but the sink keeps on giving. I find out I got an oil leak because nobody looked under my car when I pulled the tree out. We have yards that will never be barefoot grass ever again, because the debris is driven in one-inch pieces into the ground. Glass, shingles, wood, steel, aluminum, nails, it's driven into the ground. You find it every time you step outside. Every time you go out, people come to the door, they're handing me a handful of nails. I found this under a yard when I came across the street. This will never be walkable again, ever. Our dogs can't walk in the grass. Our pets can't be in the grass, and the children can never, ever play in a sprinkler again in the backyards. We need a crew to come out in the spring and help us find debris. It's still driven into the ground. I'm not the only one. It's just like it's churning and just driving all this stuff into the ground. I had 11 trees before the storm started. I had one at the end of the storm. 10 were down. I benefited from your trucks that came and got debris. My yard was picked up five times. The biggest pile was eight foot wide, eight foot high, and 20 feet long, and that was one tree. So, I hugely benefited from that, and I appreciated that. But last week, I had to pay $3,000 to get more of it removed from my yard, and the trees that had big branches still hanging and have all those trees cut off. It was all I could do to afford that extra $3,000. And that's on top of the 10 I've just told you about, having my roof decked for the second time. We need help. There's emotional trauma that hasn't ended. There is stuff that is going to need to be done. We can't walk all over our yards and look for every tiny piece of glass and shred. We need a crew to come out and help us just clean our yard, maybe in the springtime. But you can't do that right now. We can't do all of that. And there is a trauma. I drove to Columbus. My husband and my autistic daughter live over there. I drove to Columbus about five weeks after the storm, and when I came back, I was so eager to get back to what I understood now. It was scary to be in a community that didn't have a broken tree. I was, I felt like maybe one of those prisoners of war kind of people who suffer, and they think that's their new norm.
Can you get your three minutes, the second three minutes?
Okay, I'm done. What I was going to tell you was, we still need help. There's much to be done, and everybody has a news story. Go on the Beaver Creek Tornado Network. You will see people calling out for help. Also, I encourage you to come do your trick-or-treating in our neighborhood. We have the best Halloween trees in Beaver Creek.
There you go.
We're the spookiest neighborhood, but we need help, and we're going to need it for three to five years, minimum, absolute minimum.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council tonight on any subject?
The other thing that I would like to bring up about...
This is, no, please. Does anyone else want to address council on any subject tonight? All right. We're not going backwards on the agenda. We do not interact. At citizen comment time, we do not interact with the citizens in general. If you want to, if council wants to open it up, that's fine. Anybody want to open it up? I appreciated the input, but this is not, this time is not the discussion. We can put it on the agenda at another meeting if need be, but this is not the place for discussion on our agenda. It never has been. Thank you. All right. No more citizen comment? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.